Our guest today is the chairman of Chicago's City Council Black Caucus. He has served as alderman of the 6th Ward for nearly six years. He is a lawyer and specializes in licensing issues. He's a graduate of St. Ignatius, of DePaul University. There we go, St. Ignatius. You know, that just reminded me, Tim King is here. Where's Tim King? Tim, there we go, Tim King and all the urban prep stars. Give him a round of applause. There we go. Thank you. I'm sorry, Tim. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Restart. Chairman of the Black Caucus, alderman six years, lawyer, licensing issues, St. Ignatius, DePaul University with a Bachelor of Science degree in finance and a graduate of Chicago Kent College of Law. All right, there we go. And Ignatius, you can clap too if you want. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Our guest today is married to Cheryl, who's watching. Cheryl, hi, everybody. She's watching on the livestream. And they are the proud parents of two beautiful children, Sidney Celeste and Rod... Oh, Sidney's here?
Yeah.
Okay, let's just... Come on, stand up. Let's give her a welcome. Welcome, Sidney. You should be so proud. And Roderick Jr., he's not here. Okay, that's good. He's at school. That's good. One other thing, our guest of honor's father was one of the classiest people in public service. Perfect manners, impeccably dressed, and so to Mayor Sawyer, we salute you. And our guest today is so smart, he brought his mother along. Celeste Taylor, let's give her a round of applause. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Alderman Rod Sawyer. Alderman?
Good morning, everyone. Oh, afternoon, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. And again, I think Jay kind of stole some of my thunder, thanking everyone for being here today. It's really quite humbling to have an opportunity to speak with you. And really, today, I want to have kind of a blunt conversation with you about some of the things that are facing Chicago. We're having many challenges, and recently, it seems that everyone has an opinion about what's going on with black people here in Chicago. So I figured I might as well add my voice, add my voice to the chorus and give my perspective on a path forward. Now, if we really want to address some of the growing challenges facing the black community, we need to really take a look at its source. Now, I remember South Side where students went to their neighborhood school, and they had the opportunity, and they went to some of the top high schools and colleges in the nation. I had the great opportunity to attend both, with Tim and I, with both Cowleton Day School, which I really believe that he used that formula to form urban prep, college prep, which was a great formula, and also had the opportunity to attend St. Ignatius. There we go. Thank you. But the thing was, several of my classmates attended schools in my local community. A lot of my classmates attended Dixon, Ruggles, two South Side open enrollment community grammar schools. Some attended schools like St. Felicitus and St. Dorothy, Catholic neighborhood elementary schools. And they all went on to become successful, both at Ignatius and going forward. And we have to really acknowledge that. That's something that we're missing. Our families were able to shop, work, and entertain themselves in safe neighborhoods that supported one another. While everything was not perfect, the American dream was accessible to people on the South and West sides of Chicago. But that was before we got record levels of disinvestment in middle-class communities. Over the years, the patronage system in Chicago has been used as a placeholder for all that is wrong in the city of Chicago. But for all its faults, the patronage system did help build many middle-class black communities. The solid people that I grew up with, like the ones I grew up who went to church every Sunday, they voted in every election, provided a power base for elected officials to give people who would have otherwise been left out an opportunity for a good career. I always have to give really quick examples. You have people that you want to help, you see that they do great things, they get involved in their block clubs and organizations. These are the types of people that you want to help work in the city of Chicago, and that's really what we're looking for. Now, when we go back to Shackman, portions of that Shackman decree actually contributed towards destroying these same communities that I'm referring to. I think many people forget that an aspiring politician, otherwise great guy, Michael Shackman, was a candidate, if you remember this, Mr. Donovan, for a candidate for the Constitutional Convention back in the 70s. This lawsuit wasn't rooted in stopping corruption initially, it was rooted in his inability to get support. Let's be honest. Now, while the first set of Shackman reforms did bring some positive changes, there were things like removing political consideration from firings, promotions and transfers, and any other adverse actions, but the second set of reforms that was done in the 80s banned other considerations like hiring. Now, going back to my last example, what it did, for example, if I knew someone now that was president of their block club, organizing of their clean and green community, very active in their block club, everything they did, they did right, but they did not have a job. And they came to me and said, Alderman, could you recommend me for a job? Please note that I cannot do that in the current system, the way it's set up. You know, I agree with portions of the Shackman decree which eliminated firing. I grew up in an area of Shackman. I grew up under a politician that was involved, and I saw those and others somewhat abuse the system. And that was the part that needed to get rid of. But what we effectively done is throw the baby out with the bathwater and throwing the whole system out and saying that it doesn't work at all, which it did. But what happened in this thing, it started starting the process of outlawing any politics from political office. That fundamentally does not make any sense. People have to run for office to keep their jobs, but they're supposed to pretend that they have no interest in politics. That's what we're dealing with right now. It sets up ethical conflicts that never get to the root of the actual corruption that has set communities behind. Instead, we dismantled one pathway to employment and opportunity without creating a different pathway for how people of color would get into these careers. The scandals on race at the water department and other governmental entities illustrate that racism was a blockade to employment once the system was supposedly be made fairer. The good government crusades that have been at the core of many recent progressive movements are at the core of the reason you don't see many African-American male progressive political figures. I consider myself one of them, the minority, or large-scale progressive victories. Because at the core, as many of us can remember, or some choose not to remember, that as government got cleaner, it also got whiter. Now, obviously, no one is proposing to return to the boss days, but we need to acknowledge that race plays an essential role in hiring decisions and policies that are proposed and enacted by the groups that are in power. We, as a city, cannot continue to ignore that. This is why I have proposed, along with Alderman Viegas and others, both removing both the personal net worth caps and the business caps for MBE organizations. Currently, if a company makes on average $27 million over three years, they no longer qualify as a minority business. I argue that that number as a gross revenue amount is much too low to pretend that a black or Latino company no longer needs help being put into projects. If you are currently certified, your net worth cannot be over, I think approximately 2.4 million, give or take. That's less than what many pro athletes make, and it's clear they have not overcome race. In short, simply getting a few contracts simply does not make people forget that you are black, brown, or a woman. Does not happen. But I will say, the MBE program did work in its first iteration. In the 80s and 90s, the system did work. Prior to 1982, there were very few black, Latino, and women-owned construction firms. I remember personally, one of the few that I remembered as a child growing up was UBM. I think I know Paul King is in the room. My buddy right here, my mentor, great guy. But between the years 1982 and 1997, the number of these companies multiplied significantly. Now, it's great to go from zero to existent, but the next step is, how do we create companies large enough to have real impact in the community? The current system incentivizes black and Latino-owned companies to stay small. Matter of fact, at worst, it punishes them for being big. Without fully addressing this system, all the growth in Chicago over the next 10 to 15 years will still largely be controlled by the same white-led organizations, the super firms that have monopolized the system for generations. Without using the system to create some rich business people of color, there would not be a pathway to bringing real investment back to the communities of color. Because if we're honest, we'd acknowledge that it's rich people from communities of color that are most likely to invest in communities of color. It's how it worked before. I don't know if you all remember, but we once had in our communities auto dealerships, Al Johnson, Mr. White, Buick. We had banks, independents and others. We had insurance companies. You know, where are they now? But there's another roadblock, and I'll digress for a moment, there's another roadblock to stabilizing our communities, which potentially may have greater impact, and that is the fight to keep talented youth, young people of color, here in our city. Yes, our young people are concerned about violence and schools, but the underlying issue is that unites their concerns is a lack of opportunity. In order to create this opportunity, we need to take a holistic look at how we ensure that young people have a chance to succeed. We need to do more than just remove the MBE caps. We have to have a real challenge, we have a real challenge with the city's enforcement of the MBE rules and contracts that we currently have. The city and all levels of government, for that matter, need to ensure that when these large contracts are awarded, the actual MBE spend meets what was promised. That's very important. Now, one of the other gaping holes in our MBE system is that there is no incentive for major corporations to promote people of color. We don't have a system that gives credit to large firms or financial service institutions who seek to participate in like bond deals or real estate deals. They have people of color in leadership positions at firms working on these projects. If a company has an MBE requirement, there's no incentive to request that a black Baker McKenzie partner or generous black partner be on your deal if you need MBE credit because you won't get any, working with that attorney. So we end up with projects in the black community where all the power brokers in the rooms are white, while a black company may get a subcontract, a construction subcontract, or maybe a community outreach contract. Nothing's wrong with any of those, but it's not enough. I do not want to discount that there are successful people of color in the C-suite, but the lack of any incentive for corporate diversity in publicly funded deals is a hurdle that these executives should not have to overcome. So what's the way forward? We have to acknowledge that race is a thing that cannot just be fixed with metrics and quotas. We need to create real value for diversity where people understand that it's something that meaningfully helps a business more than just a box to check. And as we need, and we need, and we need to stop with the notion that when we can tell a company or a person of color that they're successful enough that they won't have to deal with race anymore, it simply does not exist. The fact that race will always exist in America. Now, our achievements make us proud because of the things that we have to overcome as a people. I see it as part of my job, and I think Gil can understand, a part of his job as chairman of our respective caucuses, to make sure that we continue to make progress under a fairer system. The point is, this is how we change perceptions. If black businessmen grow to as large as any company or rise to the heights in corporations, we can begin to chip away at that idea that we're somehow lesser. It would require some bold steps that I fully acknowledge the problems that racism has caused in the public policy in the history of this city. As I've often said, and I think again Gil and I have gotten in trouble for saying this, but we need to have a goal that says, when it comes to public money spent, the dollars should seek to reflect the percentage of the city made up by that ethnic group. We need to make strong investments in human services and repair some of the people broken by the criminal justice system and the educational systems so that they will have an opportunity to compete in Chicago. Black children can have role models who aspire to and to see a way forward for success in their lives, but that means that success has to be about providing jobs and careers and community benefit, not just some personal amenities. Our current policies are a blockade to that. Now, the Obama Presidential Center is coming to Chicago, and 51% of those contracts are going to black companies. This is a private project, so the foundation could have picked whoever they wanted. They picked some of our more renowned African-American companies, construction companies, Powers Construction, Brown and Momen, Safeway, and Ujama Construction. But it would have been a shame, under our current public works rules, if they had to be turned down over the years if they'd gotten too much money on a particular contract. And just to be clear, I don't see this as a zero-sum game. When my father was in office, I saw many black millionaires come into fruition. They came into their own. In addition to Paul King, we had Larry Huggins, Art Smith, gosh, there was so many, Bob Hughes, many black millionaires that came into their own during that time. But you know what? We didn't lose any white millionaires in the process. Racism is still real. Bias continues to exist. We stand here to resist and to make policies that work, not policies that just look good in the media. Hopefully, that's, this can help move our conversation forward. Now, I believe that Chicago's best days still lie ahead, and I believe that we can unite and be one great city. But I know that this requires an honest conversation about our past and our present if we are going to win our future. Thank you.
I was just gonna let them keep clapping. Worked for me, Alderman. David Doig from Chicago Neighborhood Initiative.
Dave.
I don't know where you are, but you're in the room somewhere. There he is, over there. So, black history is more than just Rosa Parks and Harriet Tubman and Barack Obama. It is the problems and the issues and the challenges that we face today, and thank you, Alderman Sawyer. So, we have a few questions. Are there any more? Come on, you guys, really? Two questions?
There's some over there.
Did you write it? Oh, I thought that was Alderman. I was gonna say, you don't have to write it, you can just say what you need to say, but that wasn't Alderman Harris. So she's writing hers. We do have a couple of questions. Let's start with this one. Jason Smith pre-submitted this question. People are welcome to pre-submit questions if you want to in the event that you cannot be here, and this one's fine. Jason is a city club member. He says, Superintendent Eddie Johnson said something more must be done with the youth in the city with the carjacking and crime. Can you speak to the state of the Chicago Cook County Juvenile Court and its policies?
Maybe a little bit, yes, I think I can. And I did hear Superintendent Johnson's statement when he made that, and obviously, this is something we all shared, but again, what we talked about and I spoke about in the speech, we have to create more opportunities for people, and we have to find a way and an honest discussion, how do we do that? Now, you can talk to some people and say, there's so many jobs in Chicago you can hardly shake a stick at, and some people will agree with that. There's another set of the population that says, there are no opportunities for youth and particularly people of color, and I tend to agree with that as well. I agree with both statements. There are a lot of jobs here in Chicago. Warehousing, manufacturing, logistics, there are jobs here if you really want to work. Our problem is, how are we, we not connect the youth to the jobs? We have to find a path forward in doing that, and if not, we're gonna continue to get the problems that we continue to have. You know, it's really become a problem now that the problem has extended north of Madison Street. You know, let's be honest, that's, that's what's happened.
That's just the truth.
That's the truth. You know, we have to start making this honest discussion that sometimes makes us uncomfortable. As an African-American, I do feel uncomfortable when I gave, and I give this opportunity because this happened to me. I attended a youth event on City 9th Street, and a gentleman pulled at my heartstrings. He, he was homeless, he was couch surfing, he had just had a child, and he sat in this meeting crying about he really wanted an opportunity to change his life around. I gave him my cellphone number, I said, please call me, I'm gonna try to help you best I can. So in the meantime, I went to all the unions, I went to every union that I could, and I finally found someone that was willing to give this young man a chance. They said, Rod, you know, I'm gonna get you, this is an exception, I'm gonna get an internship for you for this guy. Now, one, the gentleman never called me back. I had to go back to my friend to get his number, and I finally got in touch with him. I said, hey, I got you an opportunity. You go through this program, you're gonna be making 30, 40 dollars an hour in a couple, few years. It's a great opportunity for you. Now, all you need is a GED and a driver's license. He had neither, and nor was he willing to talk about that path forward. This is kind of the uncomfortable conversation that we have to have. A lot of our people aren't ready. And I'm, you know, my pastor always says, if you can't say amen, say ouch. You know, this is an ouch moment. But, but we have to continue to have the conversation going forward so we can provide opportunity for more people so that we can get people to work and opportunities.
Corliss, I'm just feeling an article coming, just kind of, sorta, yeah. You know, just, that was my little passive-aggressive. May Whiteside, that was May writing that question over there. CKL Engineers LLC, in order to create successful minority engineers, how do we address the lack of access to capital, and how can we address that gap in funding?
Again, I think, yeah, I think I kind of referred to it a little bit in the speech, but we have to continue to have these types of discussions because it is important for you, you know, one of the challenges that any company has, and I think when, you know, when other companies have colds, we have pneumonia. You know, it's that much harder for you to get access to capital, no matter what your credit score is, what matters, what contracts you have, you know, we have to get over that, you know, have that conversation with lending institutions and financial institutions, venture capitalists, people that can see the good in you. You know, I know, obviously, I know you, so I know what kind of work that you're capable of doing, and I know that if I had the money, I would invest in you, you know, but we have to expose that to others that do have capital, that our community is worth making an investment in. You know, I think that's where our disconnect lies. We don't, a lot of people that do have capital don't think that if it's not one business or another, you know, it can't be successful on the South and West sides. You know, engineering firms, other personal service firms, you know, have that niche to be successful. We all went to the same schools, we all had to pass the same test. We can be very, every bit as successful as any large-scale engineer, large-scale law firm, financial service, stockbroker, you name it, you know, we can do it. But we have to have the opportunity, and we need to continue to have that discussion and fight for you and people like you.
Just by a show of hands, how many minority contract people are in the room today? I did that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thomas McElroy from Level One Global Solutions, using South Side high schools as an example, can more minority-led development issues take place with the development deals coming to Chicago, hopefully Amazon, Google, et cetera?
The answer to that, Tom, of course they can. The problem is that people have to be intentional about making it happen. You know, we fought very hard to make sure that although I did not have a choice, I made it clear when I spoke to members of the Public Building Commission that if you're gonna build a school in Inglewood, you better be sure to make sure that that construction team reflects the neighborhood. You know, that was something that was, you know, I said, please, I said, no disrespect to anybody that's on this deal, but please know that if you're not gonna highlight African-Americans in an area that has seen disinvestment, had been blighted, has had struggles trying to recover, if you don't show us and have black people involved in this in a big way, we're all gonna have a problem. And I'm gonna be the first one to say that we're gonna have a problem. So, I was glad that they, they made that suggestion and they got a company with an African-American lead and a whole lot of African-American contractors involved, and we can do more of that all over the city.
So because we know there's room for everybody at the table, again, this is Black History Month, but those of us who happen to be black, I'm black in case you didn't know, there's a couple of things that I get to be every morning, and that is female and black. I kind of can't hide that, unless you're talking to me on the phone, you might not know. But although this is what we would call Black or African-American History Month, we're black every month, and what you're talking about is so important because we don't get to just leave these issues here. So Antoinette Wright, she is the director of the National Museum of Gospel Music. She's here somewhere in the room, I know I saw her. Okay. How can we ensure that more TIF monies reach the black and brown communities? That's a wide-open question, but...
Well, yeah, that's kind of a big general question, but obviously, you have to look at where your projects are and discuss with your elected officials who are presiding or administering over those, assisting in administering over those TIFs. I still think the TIF program is still too centrally located, administered. I think our elected officials should have more input about what goes on, and I think if they did, we would have more projects of diversity, and you know, again, I don't think we would ever leave other companies out. I think we talked about, I talked about it here today. I want us to have, infiltrate all levels of corporate life. You know, I want us to be in the C-suites. I want us to be in lead construction firms. I want us to be in banking institutions. But I also want us to have our own. I want us to have our own construction companies, our own engineering firms. You know, I'm not saying that one is exclusive of the other. I want us to say that we can all get along, there's plenty of work to be done, and we can all do it together.
I see some other questions coming. I can take about two more, so it's Tim. I kind of can't not take Tim King's question. Oh, okay, well then I'll take it, because, is he an urban prep kid?
He's a law.
Oh, then I gotta take it. I'm sorry, come on. Okay, so this question is from Antoine Ratliff, a city club member, not here, again. I'm gonna kind of, I'm gonna see if I can paraphrase this. He talks about fighting back about, against the black population that's lost in Chicago. I think we should talk about the population that's lost in Chicago. And do you think that the incarceration system or what trends do you see are dealing with this, or causing it?
Well, I was just having a brief conversation with Tom Donovan while we were sitting here at lunch about that, and it is concerning to all of us about losing population all around, but even more so in the black community. We want to make sure that, one, that people think, you know, know that this is a safe place to be, and we have a challenge trying to get to that level. You know, we have to work with our, with our police, we have to work with our business community. You know, we have to keep doing what's necessary to convince people that this is a place to be. Chicago is a melting pot. It's a great place to work, live, entertain yourself, but it does not always translate to the outskirts, to the South Side, to the West Side. There's certain pockets that still have not seen investment since the 60s. So when we do things that someone thinks is maybe unpopular to the youth, like the police academy, there has not been investment over there since the riots in the 60s. You know, is it the best opportunity? Maybe not. But it is an opportunity for black people to work, black people to get involved in contracting. There're gonna be new retail corridors set up there where black people can also get involved. We just have to be intentional about making sure when, as they say, when the deal is cut, that we get involved. We're at the table instead of being on the menu.
Okay, the clap. So of course, you know, we got a lot of great questions late, right?
Of course.
So, Deshonda, your question is great about the middle class locating to other cities, but I'm gonna ask him a couple other questions because we talk about that a lot. Yeah, these, I'll make sure he gets these questions, and maybe he'll get back to you. Okay. Peter from the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund says, how are you looking, how are you working...
How are you working with Rob and Neighborhood Opportunity Fund?
Dr. Green says writing is fundamental, but I have really bad...
Yeah, I could have got that one out of that. Thank you. Oh, it's how are we working with the mayor on the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund? Now, the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund is a good program. It is, I'm happy, that, along with the retail thr-... It is, I'm happy that, along with the Retail Thrive Zone, I was excited that we had that. But our challenge is, it's a good start. You know, and it is being helpful. I do work with the administration, helping with identifying businesses, both existing and new businesses in the area. We do have a good cordial working relationship, but overall, I want that program, and I'm hoping that program will be more substantial as more money gets pumped into it based on the density that's being purchased downtown. I don't know if people understand what happens basically with the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund. It's based on contractors, and we call it buying density. As they're getting deals done, they're building skyscrapers down here, and you know we have a most robust construction industry right down here downtown. We have, last year, we had over, what, 60 cranes up in the air? And as they're trying to get rezoning and planned developments, they have to do what they call, put projects in more dense areas. And in order to do that, they have to pay money into a program, to a fund. Part of that money goes into the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund, where we can fund projects on the south and west sides to provide opportunity for those that historically have not had an opportunity to, that want to start a business, they might be a little short on the capital or other resources that we can assist them with. So the program is great, we're working with the mayor's office about it, I just want it to be more substantial as it's going forward.
Gaylord is the urban prep alum, and I promised him I'd ask the question, so, he talked about this a little bit earlier. Can you talk about the potential of minority businesses and engaging them more and community organizing? What comes to mind is me, something like Kim's gonna kill me, but her family's business, you know, the Neely gas stations, right? They were so involved in the community, they didn't just work in the community, they were involved as well, so.
And I think I mentioned a little bit earlier, and I should have included gas stations looking at Kim, because, you know, Neely family is close family, friends of ours. But these are also businesses that don't have black ownership any longer. There are no black gas stations any longer. I think there's maybe one, is there one on 55th Street, Dr. Starks? I think that's the only black gas station left right on Wall Bash. And other than that, we don't have black gas stations, we don't have black banks any longer. You know, it's frustrating. But I want to thank, I'll give a shout-out to Gaylord and his participation in the Greater Chatham Initiative, which is something that was formed based on conversations we had with the mayor some years ago about reinventing Chatham. And I felt that Chatham was an easy fix, and I'd asked the mayor to come up with, could he help come up with a solution? And he gave it to Mr. Michael Sacks, who, he brought over some great people, Teresa Prim and others, that really got involved. Brian Sleed, I think Brian's still in the room. Brian was my chief of staff at the time, was working on it every week until we got the basis of what's now called the Greater Chatham Initiative. And we need more of that throughout our city to put some lifeblood in the areas that have been, and I call it stagnant for many years. You know, we have not had some lifeblood pumped into the Chatham area in some time, and I'm glad that this is helping, but it's really challenging to get people involved, to get people involved in community activities, again, because there's no carrot and no stick. You know, quite honestly, people are looking for an opportunity. Hey, if I get involved in that, they're gonna say, "What's in it for me? What do I get?" You know, I do this work, I go knock on doors, I tell people about your events and what goes on. What do I get out of it, out of the sense, with, in addition to the sense of community pride and feeling good about myself? You know, I want a job. I want an opportunity, I want a contract. You know, and again, these are things that I want to talk about more. We need to find a path to get people where they need to be without violating laws. I don't want to go to jail, but I'm willing to talk about it because I think it's important enough that we really take a close look at how we do things in the city of Chicago. I once spoke with one of the inspector generals here in Chicago when she was not from here, when I told her, she was new here, I was talking about the challenges we have regarding jobs, and she's like, "Really? You all got, you all do that?" I said, "Yeah." She said, one of the cities she came from, she said, "No, elected officials, actually, they have positions that they can give to their constituents, and they're not being cited for corruption or nothing's going wrong. That particular city is flourishing." You know, why can't we do that? And we wonder why our city is in the dire straits that we are in some places. Now, again, the city is great. Down here, it's wonderful, best place to be in America. You know, but some places on the south and west side, you know, nothing's been done. And we have to find a way to extend the opportunities to all corners of the city of Chicago, not just the central business area.
That's right.
Thank you.